Okay, all ready? Okay. I'd like to call this public hearing on October 12th, 2021, to order. Please rise and pledge your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, town clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:15 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law entitled "Local Law Prohibiting On-Site Cannabis Consumption Sites pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law." This local law, absent the filing of the requisite number of protesting petitions, will take effect 45 days after the date of its adoption by the Town Board upon its filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Town Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date time and place aforesaid.
Thank you. I just want to give you a little background for people who may not have been keeping abreast of what it's all about. We had to make a decision as to whether we wanted to allow smoking pollards from marijuana in the Town of Clinton. The public overwhelmingly said no, the Town Board said no, so to make that occur, we had to do a local law. We did agree on the local law last month, had the public hearing today, any comments, and then later in the regular meeting, we'll adopt it and the process moves forward. So that's just a little background on it. The rules are, come on, speak up here in the microphone, give your name and your street address or so, just so we can hear and record some comments. Anybody wish to speak at this time? Okay, come on up. Russ.
Russ Tompkins, 1132 Center Road, Shieldsville. I'm all in favor of what I see here, but I have a little question in my mind. If I remember right, I wasn't at the last meeting, there was three things. One was going to be sales, which you opted to allow, against my judgment, and the other was onsite consumption, and the third was public consumption, consumption, I believe, on public property. And I'm wondering if that third one has been addressed, because I don't see that. And I'm 100% in favor of what I see here, but that's a question I have on the third issue, to opt in or opt out of.
We took no position on opting out of that, so we're still not going to have smoking in public places, like parks and...
So currently, this would just apply to town property?
Yeah.
And we already ban smoking on town property? So it would apply, the ban is in effect?
Yeah.
We didn't have to pass anything to do that.
So you're going upon the assumption that the state is going to use the definition of smoking to include marijuana?
Yep.
And you don't... Sometimes assumptions aren't...
And if we have to change it, we just have another meeting and change it. I mean, it's not a good deal.
Well, I mean, I hope that's what it is, saying, okay, they don't allow smoking cigarettes, so they won't allow smoking marijuana.
Yeah.
But, like I say, I just, I didn't want to see that take place.
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Don't all rush up here at one time. We're going to have to wait until 25 after before we start the next piece of business. So if you have any further comments or suggestions, voice them.
Oh, no, no, no. Trying to turn it off. Nobody will hear it. It started playing music.
6:21, yep.
Okay. So give me about a minute or so before, and so we can close and then open the next
The Imparati thing is mine?
No, it's, should be Ray. Did I give it to you?
Yeah.
I got all that stuff.
I'm not sure. I've got a last minute.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We throw a dart and figure out who gets what.
I couldn't...
So that's why my rule is no last minute anything.
Yeah.
It's like I'm crazed, you know? And then there's always something last minute, but not when there's like five things. Okay, Ray, you're good to go. 6:24.
Okay. There being no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Done with that one. Now we go into the next one. I make a motion to open the public hearing on a local law to override the tax cap on October 12th, 2021. We'll all rise and pledge our flag again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, Carol, would you read the public hearing notice?
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on October 12th, 2021, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:25 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law of 2021 entitled "A Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit for Fiscal Year 2022 pursuant to New York General Municipal Law, Section 3-C." This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date time and place aforesaid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The same rules will apply. We'll ask that you come up to the microphone, give your name and street address, and any comments you had. The local law is the ability for the town, if needed, to override the 2% tax cap. We don't know if we will or won't, but we got to have it done before November 20th, and this is just enough time to make it happen. So at that, I open it up for public comment. Anybody want to step up to the microphone and say something? Otherwise, we'll just wait out five minutes, and then we'll go to the regular meeting, which will have a lot of activity, I'm sure. Okay, it's 6:29. We're ready to end this part of the public hearing. There being no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now we go back into the regular meeting. The regular meeting is, what's the agenda? Okay. So, I'm calling the regular Town Board meeting of October 12th, 2021, to order. Please rise and pledge your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First order of business is approving minutes. We've got four of them. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2021 workshop meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2021 public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2021 Town Board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 23rd, 2021 special Town Board meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now we'll go into public discussion. At this time, the public is able to make comments during this open session on any item on the agenda, not things that are not on the agenda. Again, the same rules, come on, pop up and talk into the microphone so the people in the audience can hear you. That's the TV audience I'm talking about. I know everybody can hear you here. And give your name and street address, and we'll start now. Is there anybody that wants to say anything? Are you putting your hand up?
No.
Oh, okay. I couldn't tell if you're parting your hair or putting your hand up. Nobody's saying anything? Okay. Then we'll, I close the public comment and return to regular order of business.
Second.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, supervisor's comments are next. I only have two. One, you probably heard but didn't remember, "The days of area codelessness, local phone calls will go away in Dutchess County on Sunday, October 24th." It's not very far from now. That's the day when 10-digit local dialing will become mandatory for all phones using 845 or 914 area codes, which means using only the area code and the seven, regular seven-digit phone number. The normal long-distance one will not be needed. The other one is tomorrow, which is Wednesday, the 13th, the Hollow Road Dutchess County Transportation Committee Road Safety will be doing a study, start of a study, on the Hollow Road area, in the area of Toad Hall and Frost Mills. It'll go from 7:30 in the morning till about 9:00 on the roads. So if you see a bunch of people walking the streets, looking at things, and having their vests on, try to avoid them, or go a different way if you don't want to chance it. We're trying to, due to the safety record of all the accidents had, that occurred on that stretch of the road, trying to come up with some plan that Dutchess County, it's a county road, so they can make improvements and hopefully make it safer for everybody. So that's, that's all I got there. Now we'll start in regular reports. First one is planning board.
All righty, so September 21st, the planning board met. There's a couple items on the agenda. One was property at 580 Clinton Hollow Road, in which the county, the landowners were looking to construct a detached garage workshop, and needed a variance setback reduction from 50 feet to 10 feet to install their 24 by 36 garage. The parcel is a 4.03 acre lot, and there was no other alternate location where the garage could be installed, so the planning board gave a positive recommendation to the zoning board. The next item was a parcel on 93 Ruski Lane. This parcel is, two parcels, one is in Pleasant Valley, which is the driveway, and the larger parcel is in the back, which is in the Town of Clinton. The applicant is seeking a wetlands permit because in order to access the back property, he has to go through a federal wetland, and because of the town's Local Law 3 of 1991 and subsequent changes in the local law 2-2008, in order to construct a driveway or any other type of improvements requires that request. The parcel can totally consist of 55 acres, it's in an R5 zoning, and because there's no other alternatives, it was a coordination between the Town of Pleasant Valley and Clinton. The applicant is looking to build a four-bedroom house, and a public hearing was opened and closed, and the interested parties, such as the CAC and the Dutchess County Plan, were both received and discussed. Town engineer comments were satisfied, and a negative declaration was issued, and their request of permit was granted. Next item is right up the road here, the cross-three-lot subdivision, in which a sketch plan approval was scheduled for that night. The applicant was looking to break up three parcels to Lot 1 being 28.27, Lot 2 being 16.41, Lot 3 being 16.33. Area variances were granted by the zoning board in July. The board agreed to declare itself de agency, an escrow account was established, a sketch plan was approved, and no further action was done. One that I'll read a little bit more is a bed and breakfast that's over on 439 Lake Road. This is a bed and breakfast that had been in existence since the 90s, and apparently during the transition that it got sold, it was not used as a bed and breakfast. So the parcel is six acres, the house itself is 5,040 square feet. The proposal was to rent one or two rooms on a month-to-month basis, and also use it for small groups, like life coaching, well-being workshops, and retreats of no more than 15 people. There was a lengthy discussion, and the definition of bed and breakfast was stated, "More than one bedroom for temporary occupancy and meals as provided for occupants while short-term rentals. A period of less than 30 consecutive nights is not a bed and breakfast establishment." The board agreed to declare itself de agency, the public hearing was set for October 5th, and no further action was taken that night. On October 5th, where we left off with that bed and breakfast, public hearing was opened and closed. They gave great consideration for the fact that it had been used as a bed and breakfast in the past. There was concerns from previous meetings regarding the proposal of the one to two bedrooms a month. Lot of going back and forth with the conference center law, hotel, new definitions of bed and breakfast. Basically, it boiled down to the special permit was, to operate a bed and breakfast was granted. The next item that night is a lot line adjustment at 318 Slate Quarry and 425 Mountain View Road, where the one lot owner is transferring 20.2 acres to the other lot owner, and they're both adjoining, so it's not too far-fetched to do this. The sale would result in a 5.21 acre land for the one property owner and a 46.84 acre for the other property owner, and the adjusted, the requested lot line adjustment was granted. The next item was on Pumpkin Lane and Nine Partners. The applicant proposed a lot line adjustment, requested to allow construction of two separate single-family dwellings on 19.7 acres of land and an R5 zoning. The applicant proposed two lots to become three lots with one driveway. After a very lengthy discussion, the board agreed that the best way to achieve the intention is through subdivision process, so the zoning does not allow for two single-family dwellings on a single parcel. It is setting precedence, so the board also agreed that an area variance is necessary for the driveway, and no action was taken that night. End of report.
Thank you. ZBA?
On the 23rd, a interpretation was heard in which the applicant was seeking to reverse a zoning administrator's determination letter dated May 18th of 2021 regarding his interpretation of Section 250-28B through J and the Town of Clinton's code of activities related to smoke fumes, odors emanating from 92 Deer Ridge Drive. The town attorney and the Puncher's legal counsel were both present. It was noted that the public hearing was open at the last meeting in August. A number of people from the public expressed comments. The applicant submitted additional documents related to her request. After a long discussion, exchange of opinions, the board agreed to close the public hearing. Per the regulations, a decision should be made within 62 days from the date of the hearing, and no action was taken that night. End of report.
Thank you. Next one's Conservation Advisory Committee.
The CAC met on September 15th in the Masonic Hall. They reviewed a planning board application previous to the meeting for Maple Brook Farm, a wetlands permit for a driveway on 93 Ruski. The response was submitted on September 15th. Gene McAvoy is continuing CAC efforts on the benchmarking program with assistance from Jacob Strauss. The results of their work is going to help inform projects being worked on by the Climate Smart Task Force, and discussions about plans for projects in the coming year resulted in many ideas being debated throughout the meeting, and it was a good discussion. End of report.
Thank you. Next one, Climate Smart Task Force.
The task force met on September 28th in the Masonic Hall. A subcommittee was formed to work on greenhouse gas inventory for municipal buildings. This is going to be followed by an inventory for the community as a whole. Both of those inventories will help the task force to create a climate action plan for the community. It's an ambitious project, and we're lucky to have talented people working on it. There were preliminary discussions for a green energy fair to be held in late spring 2022. We want to thank Todd Martin and Melissa Korchmer for continuing to work on a revised vehicle inventory for the task force. They're helping us obtain a few more points towards bronze certification. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, October 27th. This is a change from previous schedules. It looks like Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday of the month is going to work better for everybody.
Done?
End of report, sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I don't know, don't want to cut you short. Recreation Committee.
Yeah, the Recreation Committee, which really, right now, comprises of the direct, rec director and myself. We had a meeting the last Monday of September. We discussed the potential of forming a more cohesive committee, starting in November. We do have a couple new members already, and I hope to have at least four new people by the time we have our meeting the end in November. We also did a summer, kind of a talk about what we want to kind of plan on for 2022. So we started a discussion, which will be the format for the new committee, as well as a basis for what we're there to do. My report really talks about the summer camp. The summer camp, we had a limit of nine children because of the COVID situation. That is less than we usually have, and I know there are a few people in the town that were disappointed because their children were not able to get in at the last minute. I do apologize for that, but we did the right thing. Four-week camp was, ran well, we had no significant issues. We do anticipate some problems and shortages for lifeguards in 2022, so we're hoping to get a head start on that, but that's statewide, that isn't just countywide. Okay. Friend Mark Park, the big thing here was vandalism over the last month and a half. The basketball backstop on one side was smashed, and that's being, in the process of being replaced. We've now have started a process to put security cameras in the park. The vandalism has been ongoing, but never this bad before, so that will happen within the next week. Friends Park, we've had more activity on. As most of you know, in the past meetings, I've talked about the CDBG grant, okay, to upgrade the park, and the upgrade will include the ball field, moving the, and upgrading the play area for children closer to... the play area for children closer to where parents could have easy access, paving the parking lot, which has already started, creating walking paths to the pavilion and the play area and again securing that park as well. And Eagle Scout has offered to build a sign for the Friends Park as part of his Eagle Scout qualifications in early two thousand and twenty-two, which we're thrilled with. So, we will have some celebration at that park. Noted, we kind of wrap up the year in October because the park starts to close down at that point. So, in two thousand and twenty-one, the pavilion rentals, which are from Memorial Day to Labor Day, total about eighty percent usage. That meant about six days that were available that were not booked. The pavilion income was fifty-two hundred dollars. A portion of that will be used for improvements in the park. Recruiting for new committee members is going on, is ongoing. Again, we have two brand-new ones right now and we hope that in our November meeting we'll have a full committee and we'll start to do our planning for two thousand and twenty-two. End of report.
Thank you. Next one is Building Inspector. I got the report here. Number of building permits issued, twenty-three. Number of COs and CCs issued, eighteen. Number of title searches, sixteen. Number of mileage he drove was two hundred and sixty-six. Total construction was four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Now, there was just one major item there and that was for a renovation on Nine Partners Road for a hundred and fifty thousand. So, all the rest is in the twenties and the tens and the fifteens, in that kind of range. They're all little decks and small modifications and stuff like that. So, we seem to have gone over the brink of big new houses like we've had for quite a while. The, so that's the Building Inspector. I don't have a zoning report. Did you have one?
Oh, yes, I do. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
It was not in the packet?
No.
No, so there's no report there. So, Highway.
This month, the Highway Department worked in conjunction with the Rec Department to pave Friends Park. Paving also took place on Heritage Road, Ryan Court, Friends View, Hibernia Road and Jamison Hill. The Highway crew has begun to ready the equipment for the upcoming winter season. The electronic speed trap sign is still moving around town to remind travelers to slow down on the town roads. Applications are being accepted for winter seasonal employees with a valid driver's license. Please call the Highway Department. End of report.
Telephone number.
I don't have it on me.
Three two oh four.
Three, uh, two six six three two zero four, extension one one zero.
Zero.
Yeah.
Okay. Next one is Scenic and Historic Roads.
Everything's been quiet still to this day.
Library.
The Library Board of Trustees met last night virtually. They want to thank all that helped make the car show fundraiser a success, especially Cliff Botway for the use of his property and arranging his classic cars for display, as well as Marion Osbitz for coordinating the show. It was a great event. The Finance Committee for the Board of Trustees has been hard at work putting together their two thousand and twenty-two budget as well as long-term projections. The expiration of some ongoing grants is going to bring challenges in the coming years to the library and their long-term projections are helping the Board of Trustees make some decisions to deal with those shortfalls. End of report.
Okay. Altice.
There was no correspondence from Altice this month, however.
It's like dinner bag.
Well, it means they haven't raised rates on anybody. However, I've been attempting to get in touch with Altice Government Affairs Team to continue discussions about an issue that we have on Ruski Lane. The road is in Pleasant Valley, actually Dean was just talking about this. The road is in Pleasant Valley, long driveways going north from the road, but the houses in Clinton, while Pleasant Valley is serviced by Comcast, we're serviced by Altice and neither company is being very helpful in servicing those homes. Unfortunately, the team at Altice is pretty experienced in ignoring our requests and so it's been an ongoing problem and I've been persistent and still haven't gotten a solution from them, but I'm going to keep going on it.
Okay. Thank you. How about cemeteries?
There were, there were no burials this month. The cemetery custodian received the signed deed for a new plot and did research on an existing family plot in Pleasant Plains, thanks to the Highway Department for cutting back a locust tree that was growing out of a grave in Schultzville. And Elliot Werner has appointed Carol Mackin Deputy Cemetery Custodian. End of report.
Thank you. Zoning Revision.
So, I, we're on hiatus until we finished our budget, so that will hopefully be at the end of November, we'll start it back up again.
Okay. Proposed transmission lines. In October two thousand and twenty-one, National Grid will start tree and brush clearing of the transmission right-of-way. There also may be some earth grading done to improve accessibility. In spring two thousand and twenty-two, more work will be done in preparation for the removal of the existing towers and installation of new monopoles. The project should be completed in early two thousand and twenty-four. Anybody have any other things, WIC or safety or whatever? Oh, sir. Nobody? Okay, we'll just skip all of those and then we'll go to old business. Wow. Okay. I'm going to read my comments for, oh, let me take this off here. Going to read my comments first and then we'll go into the other stuff. I just want to say, since the town board approved not allowing marijuana-smoking pollers to exist in the town, we must pass a local law to make it effective and that's what we, at the public hearing just earlier. And now we do the specific local law motion. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution of two thousand and twenty-one, adopting local law of two thousand and twenty-one entitled, Local Law Prohibiting On-Site Cannabis Consumption Sites, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part of this resolution and further pursuant to paragraph or section ninety of town law, within ten days of the adoption of this resolution, the town clerk shall post and publish a notice which sets forth the date of the adoption of this resolution and contain an abstract of such resolution concisely stating the purpose and effect thereof and stating that this resolution was adopted subject to a permissive referendum and further that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of State upon the expiration of forty-five days from the adoption of this resolution, providing the requisite number of protesting petitions are not filed necessitating a permissive referendum. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know it's a little complicated, but that's just the process. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. The next one is approve local law override of tax cap. Okay. I make a motion, oh, oh, yeah. We described it before during the public hearing and other times, so I make a motion on a override of the tax cap. The town board must pass a local law to allow the town to exceed the two percent tax cap before the two thousand and twenty-two budget is adopted. Until we get into the final stages of the two thousand and twenty-two budget process, we will not know if we will exceed the two percent tax cap. If not needed, the local law is just not used. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approve Resolution number of two thousand and twenty-one, adopting local law of two thousand and twenty-one entitled, A Local Law to Override the Tax Cap Limit for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-two, a copy of which is attached here too and made part of this resolution and further that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of State of New York. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did everybody say aye?
No, I'm debating.
Well, you got to get yes, no or nay. Nancy?
I said aye.
You said yes, okay. So, four yes, one no, motion carried. Okay. Now, the next one is the awarding of the highway garage roof bid, which is desperately needed. We received four bids for replacing the old highway garage roof and one came in lower than our estimate. The bid winner was VAD Contractors at thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Hopefully, the roof replacement will be done before the weather prevents the work. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board award the bid to the low bidder, VAD Contractors, at a cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand, five hundred at the recommendation of the town engineer and authorize and powers and directs the town supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Next one is Library Lease.
So, today I received a response from the library. There's copies for everybody.
Oh, okay.
I'll just read it. Dear Town of Clinton Supervisor and Council Members, the Clinton Community Library Trustees have reviewed the lease agreement and we are disappointed that after forty-five years of one dollar per annum fee, the town board is now requesting monthly payments of one hundred and fifty dollars. The library trustees are formally requesting that the town board restore the fee in the lease agreement to one dollar per year and not increase the fee to eighteen hundred dollars per year. As the town board knows, the majority of the library's funding comes from a four fourteen referendum that was passed with overwhelming support by the Town of Clinton residents in two thousand and seventeen. Since the two thousand and seventeen referendum, the library has seen a seventy-six percent increase in library visits and a fifty-two percent increase in circulation and use of materials, a one hundred and thirty-four percent increase in the number of adults served by library programs and adult programming expanded by eighty-two percent, a ninety-three percent increase in children served by programs. Unlike the town board, the library cannot decide to increase its own funding. Rather, we rely on either voluntary increases from the town board or direct referendum from residents of the town. Funding from the town has remained flat since two thousand and seventeen, even though demands for library services have only increased. The library is now facing a budget shortfall in the coming years due to an expiring grant and mandatory minimum wage increases and imposing an additional eighteen hundred dollars per year will only exacerbate the budget shortfall. The library is a nonprofit organization devoted to the needs of the community and has served the residents of this town in exceptional fashion. The library has been an excellent steward of the facility and has continually made upgrades to the library premises at no cost to the town. Forty-five years ago, the town and the library recognized their interdependence. In the same spirit of collaboration and cooperation, we, the library trustees, urge the members of the town board to continue to honor the fee structure as set forth in the original lease agreement. Respectfully, the Clinton Community Library Board of Trustees.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to have a discussion to have a response to that or let it sit for a little bit, but.
Well, one of the things that I was trying to find out from some other libraries that, you know, quite a few of them actually pay their own utilities and stuff, you know, with them. So, you know, we're not asking to break the bank and pay really what the actual cost is and since they are, there's a bigger, there's more use being in there, which has increased the heating demand, you know, the cooling demand, the electricity use. You know, we're in shortfalls also and we're trying to figure out our budget, as we've been saying for, you know, the past several meetings, that, you know, we're trying to work it out, you know, work out our shortfalls that we have. It's a small fee, a hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, I'm seeing that some of the other libraries are responsible for paying their stuff. They're getting the lease, we're abiding by the one-dollar lease, which I, which I'm a hundred percent in favor for, but I think we're not asking, you know, full load of what the utilities would cost, just to help a little bit on there, on that. And if they are getting more and more usage, they're, I'm sure, like a lot of the libraries, there's different ways of fundraising as well. I'm a big, I'm in favor of the library, I said that multiple times. I think it's a huge asset in the town and it fills a void with a lot of recreation. So, I don't think it's a huge thing, though, at the same time to, you know, support the hundred and fifty, so that's where I'm at still.
When you checked with other places, have you verified that the library was in a town facility or a separate building? Because in a separate building, they're stuck with all the costs, mortgage, insurance, you name it.
Yeah, and I can get a little bit more on that for the next meeting, on that if you'd like.
I also just want to say, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but it's very disingenuous to just say, well, this is really for utilities. We kept the one dollar a year rent. Either way, you're getting a hundred and fifty dollars a month from the library, whether you're calling it rent or whether you're calling it utilities. It doesn't matter what you call it, you've increased their cost by a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
But they also increased their usage by having it up more too, so that's increasing the cost to the town. You know, look, we can split hairs on which way, you know, how we phrase it. I mean, if that building sat out and we offered, you know, and it was separate and it had that feasibility, our biggest thing, I think, for the past few years of looking at it was, is figure a way to split the cost of the utilities and because everything's kind of intertwined. If that building sat separate and we gave them lease, they'd be paying for their utilities on that side if the building was totally detached and if the lease would have been lease of the use of the space and the lease is, they are getting that, the use of the space is being provided by the town for one dollar and the utilities are a small feature and if we went by square footage and tried to figure it out, it'd be a lot more than a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
So, I guess the question is, is due to their response, do we want to amend our offer to them on the lease or do we want to wait and see if they just accept it as is?
Yeah. My view, as I stated before, and I'm not reiterating anything new, is that the library has taken up the slack of the activities that typically were done by the Rec Committee in providing for young kids, winter activities, seniors and all of that stuff. You've got a lot of the other things and I pull their information and these are done by the Rec Committee. Our Rec Committee's not doing it. We don't have the ability to do it. We don't have the personnel at the moment. Who knows if we will next year? I'm not prejudging it, but it's a big challenge to do a lot of these tasks and they have been able to do it and serve the community in a proper way and I think the hundred and fifty dollars is an insult to force them to pay that and have them also do this other work. So, I don't support the hundred and fifty dollars. That's my comments and I've said it before, so it's nothing new.
So, I mean, just to kind of go over the history, I mean, it makes it sound like we're being petty. The reality is that up until the four fourteen, the town gave the space, the utilities and everything, on top of which, fifty-five thousand dollars. When they created the four fourteen, the library separated their budget line from our budget line and went to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and we had no ability because of the lease to charge for the utilities at that point in time. We had to wait until the lease came up. So, now that the lease came up, as of last year, we all kind of agreed at that time that we would kind of break out what we thought the utilities were. To lock in someone's utilities for the next twenty years at a hundred and fifty dollars, to me, is very generous and that being petty, but it's just saying, well, you have the four fourteen, you separated your budget line and you should pay your proportionate share for the utility. That's all that was. So, I'm in agreement with Chris.
I'm going to just ask a question here before I tell you what I think. Every time I see the, and please do not, first of all, I think the library has filled the gap that, and increased services to our community a hundredfold. I have no problem with that, but when I read all of the increases in participation and stuff, the question has always been in my mind, how many individuals use the library? Not the same individuals you encountered five- Not the same individuals you encountered five times, okay? I feel like these numbers might be inflated if you were to count one individual using the library service, regardless of what programs they use. There's two ways of looking at this. Look at the services and the participation. But how many of the town residents in the community actually use the library? And I've never gotten an answer on that, okay? There is a difference.
Well, it's a difficult question, because when you have a library card to the Mid-Hudson Library System, you can go to any library in the Mid-Hudson Library System. So, I can go to the Star Library or Pleasant Valley or Red Hook. And the same is true for Clinton. So, we not only are servicing residents of Clinton, which I think there are about 900 to 1,000 that have cards, but don't quote me on that, but we're also serving residents of neighboring communities and bringing them into our community for events like tag sales and things like that. I just think it's an incredible service. It brings people to the community and lets them, you know, maybe they go down and visit the Golden Russet and bring business to the town or go to one of the vineyards or something. I think they add so much to this community. And I do think it's petty to ask for the $150 a month. It does nothing. $1,800 does nothing for our budget. When we're adding that for one employee, we're doubling that, like easily, you know, and pay wages that they deserve, of course. But like this $1,800, when we went through that wages workshop, we added so much money to the budget, well beyond the $1,800. And to act as if $1,800 a year is going to break our budget when we've done that is... It is, I agree. It's insulting to the library.
Well, I don't mean to be insulting.
Well, I don't think... I'm not saying you're personally being insulting, but I think this ask is insulting. I feel like the town board is insulting them.
Well, maybe when the new town board comes on board, they'll have a different feeling. But I still feel, after all this time, that it is not unreasonable to ask for some kind of compensation for the utilities. We are in the same position as the town as the library is.
Well, no.
I feel, I feel, as a town, we have less ability to cut a service than the library has to afford the $1,800.
But they have zero ability to raise their revenue like we do.
Taxes.
Well, they've doubled their revenue. They started off with $115,000, now they're up to $200,000 in total operating expense. I mean, that's doubled since the 414 what their total, you know, operating budget is.
And they've also...
The majority of the budget is staff.
I'm not saying that they're not doing more stuff.
The majority of the budget is staff salaries, is staff salaries, okay?
That provide all the services.
I don't mean to be disparaging, but they have the ability to cut a staff to make up the difference. We do not, because now we're cutting services. Our services are weighted differently.
Originally, we wanted more than that. I mean, we were at, what, 300, you know, a month? And, you know, it's... We came down on that point, just, you know, saying, "Hey, look, acknowledge that there's something going on helps out. Over 20 years, it's $36,000. It's not a huge amount. I get it over a 20-year period." But at the same time, that's being locked in. And I think Dean made an interesting point. How would all of us like to have our utilities locked in for, you know, the next 20 years without it going up and down? I mean, you know, I would die... I'd give my... Well, I won't give any of my legs, but, you know, I'd give a finger for that.
So, let's go back... Oh, yeah.
Yeah. On this utility, you can lock in for three years if you join in the JUUL program. So, that locks you in for three years. I'm just saying...
And quite frankly, honestly, with that JUUL, I've had more people over the past two months come up and say they... They're frustrated with the whole process and everything else. So, and the previous year with the cost being more. This is... We actually increased some of our residents' costs on utilities. They thought they were going to get something, and they're telling me that they're paying more. So, this is actually saying, "You're guaranteed for 20 years."
We're veering into...
No, I just...
Well, I'm just saying, because that's been a conversation that a lot of people have approached me on.
So, my original question stands, but I think you've answered it. I will tell the library board that they're not... That the town board is not changing its position on the lease and wait on their decision on that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I mean, how... Let me ask this about, you know, where are we? I mean, we're going to go back and forth until they agree to it? I mean, at this point?
Well, I think the library, rightfully, in this letter, wanted to state their position about why they're opposed to it. They hadn't done that yet. They had not... I've done it, certainly for them, because I agree with the library. But they wanted to lay out their position, and they have, so...
I mean, most contract law, you know, contracts that I've been a part of, if, you know, this is where we're coming up moderate, make a decision on it. They don't want to pay it. We're at an impasse. I don't want to lose them. I want them to be here for the next 20 years. I'm 100% for that. But I mean, I think, what are we going to keep dragging this out until, for the next two more years? I don't know. I just, I think it's... You know, I feel insulted the opposite. You feel insulted for them, that, you know, that it's an insult to them, right? You feel the same way. I feel insulted that for many years that, you know, the town, as a taxpayer... I'm not even talking as a board member. I'm talking as a taxpayer. I voted for them to get that money years ago, the $115,000. I voted in favor of that, because my daughter uses the library system, and she still does.
I feel it's a dilemma. None of us really want to make this kind of decision, but it's business. And I'm making my decision based on business.
Yeah.
So, we'll move away from that and move on to townwide revale. Dean, what do you got?
I've got 98 pages of headache. So, this is a full-time task, which that's, you know, daunting. But there's a lot of things in here that really is going to boil down to what Teresa's willing to do and what Teresa's willing, not willing to do, and information that I'm going to need from you. So, in the next...
Who's you?
You, as Ray, sorry.
Okay. I didn't know who you was.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
The chair.
Because there's questions as to availability of space, availability of time when someone can use the space, available computer software, materials. So, it's very specific as to what we're asking someone. And because we're not asking them to do the whole town, we're only asking for specific parcels. I mean, I think a lot of it's not going to be applicable. But nonetheless, I got to find out what Teresa's going to be willing to do. But then also the fact, whether we do it or not, but we hire a deputy assessor, I would imagine that that person would be the coordinator between this service provider and Teresa, because Teresa's only in, you know, two half-days. So, there's a lot of information that needs to be fully clarified between the supervisor's office and the assessor's office for me to finish it. So, as I said, I've got 98 pages here. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, you, I, and Teresa can discuss and finish the information.
You were here when all the space was allocated and divvied up, so you're familiar with what's here, is all I'm saying.
Oh, I know. But I'm just saying, whether we need to allot it or not, or what have you.
Okay. So, we'll talk about it next month.
Okay.
Okay. We got ARPA funding update. This is $1.7 trillion that was approved in federal...
Oh, we're getting 1.7 now?
No. That was part of 1.7.
Try to make it light-hearted. Yeah. So, I mean, I think what we need to do, I think actually Ray came in with some stuff here today, too, to start, you know, scanning documents, laser fiche. Our reporting has got moved till next year. I think it was April. What I think I would want to do, we have a lot of ideas that we've made notes on over... You know, we got to funnel them down on what we want to start with and I think take a vote on, you know, to get them rolling at this point. Then we can put our report together. I know it's budget time, so it's tough to figure a date for a special meeting. But I think we're at that point, we can take and... More hearing with people, with, you know, the public, and then put our... I mean, this stuff right here, I see is great, right here. You know, scanning documents, laser fiche, file conversion, IT support. This is all... This all fits right into the realm of that. Then we have some stuff that we can use for some of the drainage issues that we described. They're telling everything they've been... That I've been watching, they've been trying to tell us to hold off on doing any of the major, like the, using the money for drainage or water projects because of the other infrastructure stuff. We could be waiting for a while on that. And if we got something that could help out the budget, you know, that... I'm not going to mention one place in general, but, you know, we might be able to use some of that and move forward. So, my... What I'm asking the board is to figure a date in the near future. I don't know if we want to do it before or during the budget process or after. And then we can kind of finalize some of these, and we can start moving forward with some of these projects.
What are some of the checkpoints or dates that we have to meet? What's the next date?
Oh, for... What do you mean? Oh, for the reporting? It was supposed to be the end of October. So, now for us, we're in NEU, it's not going to be till next year.
Okay.
And at that time, do we have to report how we plan on spending the entire $430,000?
No. We have to have at least a plan on the first part, because we have a couple of years to spend it. But we want to have, I mean, there's certain things we can start getting moving so the beginning of next year, 2022, we have some, you know, projects in mind that we can already get.
Okay.
Chris, may I ask, do we need, let's say, like, permission? Do we need to submit our projects to either the state or the...
No. So, since we're in NEU, we don't have, like, monthly reporting or anything else. So, we have our reporting, you know, we have to have a plan, and that's what we want. I mean, it'd be nice to have one that we can have. So, if we... If someone came and said, "Hey, what are you doing with that money?" We have a chunk of that money already sitting, that we have a plan with it, but technically...
Can we move forward in, like, with General Code, for example? So, we have a very good relationship with them for many, many years. So, talking to them about the laser fishing, I mean, we could start that two weeks.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. We can start it, like...
Yeah. I think we're at...
Like, that's my question. Like, do you...
Yeah. I think we just got to have that somewhere in writing before we start. So, if they come back and we get audited, here's our plan, here's our X amount. We allocated this much upfront for it, and that we have something to back it up. We don't want to just go and say, "Okay, hey, we're going to prove this right now."
I've got this much paper. I didn't think you all wanted to see it. Got a half-inch worth of paper.
Oh, what, for the ARPA, for the...
Yeah, just for this thing.
For just for the laser fiche.
Oh, just for laser fiche, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Carol is asking, like, if we spend this money, are they going to come back and say, "Oh, that isn't acceptable"?
If it's within the guidelines.
So, what form, and do you want it in, and what paperwork? Who do you send it to?
I will get the rest of the information from it, and then we'll have it for, you know, for ready to move forward.
Do you want to have a meeting, though?
I would like to have a meeting, so we can... So, we can at least get... I mean, look, this right here, I'm calculating, we have $430,000,000. You know, we're at...
$103,000.
$103,000. You know, and, you know, so I mean, it's... And this stuff we need to do for the town. It's going to be better for our communication process and everything else. So, I think this would be a...
And, you know, and the generator.
We already got one payment that would start...
$150,000 for generator. Are we going to consider it or not? I'm tired of wasting my time getting all these numbers. Yeah. Because I got enough trouble with the budget, trying to get that stuff done.
And I know there's differences of opinions on with the generator. I think, you know, I mean, I don't know if that's the right amount to spend on it or what. I don't see a problem if we can get the generator funded. I think it's a benefit to the town. I told you this before, Ray. I'm not against the generator personally, so I think...
You said, "Get a grant. Here's a grant."
In essence, yeah.
But I can't authorize it.
The town...
You try for both.
You know, we're not fitting it in. It's not coming out of the taxpayers' money directly. I guess every funding...
Income tax federal.
Yeah.
Do you want to pick a date, Chris, for a special meeting?
What do we got? I mean, we got all our budgetary meetings, so what's...
No, we don't have anything on the budget right now.
Nothing right now? Okay. So, what works with everyone?
Oh, it's upside down.
Turn my phone off. It's going to take a minute.
What days do we like?
Thursdays.
Wednesday's good for you?
Thursday's generally an open night.
Thursday?
The 21st would be...
Any conflicts with... Thursdays are the zoning board of appeals or...
I think they're... Let's see what we have. Okay. Okay, that's fine. So, that's one, two. ZBA is using this town hall, but that's on the 28th, not on the 21st.
Okay.
So, the 21st is available. That's next Thursday, a week from Thursday.
I just got to see, that might be the one night.
You're in Florida?
No. I'm not going down there till Thanksgiving, so we're good. I'm staying up here. I figure we've got budget and all this stuff.
That's Wednesday, the 20th for everybody. Those are two days that I have.
Okay.
20th is fine.
I just don't know what conflicts are with other people.
Yeah, we changed it to the 4th.
Okay.
Teresa, the 21st?
Or you want to... I can probably move my, if I need be, the 21st. I can probably move. It's a teaching.
We'll give you the 20th instead.
Yeah. How about the 20th?
Wednesday, the 20th?
Wednesday, the 20th, it's fine.
Wednesday, the 20th? Nancy?
Okay.
What time?
Which is it?
Wednesday, the 20th.
Wednesday, the 20th.
What time?
What time? It was 6 o'clock, is that...
6:30?
6:30? Do we have the consensus? Was that 6:30?
Calling a workshop?
Yeah.
On ARPA spending? Or ARPA projects?
You're prioritizing ARPA projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, projects.
And that'll be town hall? Live, in person?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that, too?
No, you can do it by... It's only a workshop.
Yeah. Okay. So, you're booked.
Right here.
You're booked for your trip to the town hall.
Okay. The next item is to loosen track.
Budget status.
Budget status. Okay. Okay. Budget status. With the delays in getting the 2022 budget information and town supervisor staffing, it is estimated to have the 2022 tentative budget available by November 1st. The only deadline we must meet is November 20th, 2021, for the New York State budget deadline. So, that's where we are. I'm still plodding away, trying to keep the office running with the support of Carol and her deputy, Mary, the support of Carol and her deputy Mary, and typing support from Sam. We're muddling along, but it's not as efficient as I would have liked it, but I don't have anybody there to help me. So the one-armed, one-armed paper hanger right now. So that's where we're at.
Ray, you said the twen-, the November twentieth, 2021?
Yeah.
That's a Saturday. Is that, we're, we're getting together on a Saturday?
No, I said that's a deadline.
Oh, deadline, all right.
New York State deadline.
All right, I just, I just, I didn't, all right, just make sure.
That's, that's put in concrete, that deadline. So I'll keep you informed. If we get done earlier, we'll set up a meeting. I have no idea yet.
See you.
Okay. Okay, the next one is security.
Okay, I'll basically talk about the security in the parks. I am looking internally in the town, both the safety and security, as we do, walk through the facilities, all the facilities in the town, and any recommendations I'll come up with. I'm going to take the coordinators with me so that they can follow through in their individual areas as I do this. And I'm hoping to have that done by the end of October. Time is, time is short, but I'll try. Okay?
Now, you were talking about security cameras earlier and all that stuff. Where's the money coming from and is a procurement policy?
I talked to you about the amount of funds that we have available in rec. It's going to come out of the rec budget. It just wasn't budgeted, but the money is there. The, the cameras are approximately two hundred dollars apiece. We'll be buying four of them. And they're trail cameras. They're not the ultimate security we'd love to have, but they'll do what we need to do. And there'll be two in each parks.
Okay, so it's less than a thousand dollars?
Less than a thousand, yes.
Yeah, that thousand dollars is a breakpoint for various ways of getting bids.
Right.
Well, ultimately, we talked about using ARPA funds to put Wi-Fi down the direct parts.
Then we can, then we can have it.
And then we can have connected Wi-Fi cameras.
Yeah, live.
Live, exactly.
Well, but.
Which will solve issues here, too. I remember, like, over behind, you know, the buildings here, we were talking about it over at the highway for a while, so we can do it all at once.
This is a quick fix that will give us the ability we don't have today. And we can always use them somewhere.
Yeah, because I, I'm not, I don't have time to do any evaluation of costs or anything for this. So if somebody needs it in the budget, you got to tell me.
Well, according to our meeting.
No, no, not the eight hundred. I'm talking, the more elaborate one.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's another whole discussion.
That's not in the budget. That's in the other thing. But I'm not, I'm just not accepting responsibility for it. That's all I'm saying.
Got it?
That's it. Now we go over to IMA with Dutchess County.
So on the ongoing saga of short-term rentals, we, we had an agreement with Dutchess County where we purchased Granicus, which is software that helps them track short-term rentals, with the understanding that Dutchess County would pay for it. And it's taken a long time, but be it resolved, I make a motion, be it resolved, that the town board approve the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Clinton and Dutchess County for the reimbursement of cost, as listed on Exhibit A, for modules purchased from Granicus for short-term rental identification. And Drex authorizes and empowers the town supervisor to sign the agreement on behalf of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is a town hall kitchen reserve fund. Do we have money in the budget this year for it? It's ten thousand dollars. I'm establishing a reserve fund so that we can put the money in it so that next year, hopefully, COVID will get gone and we can start doing that upgrade that we desperately wanted. So that's what this is all about. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approve Resolution Number of 2021 to create a capital fund, a capital reserve fund for the town hall floor replacement and kitchen upgrade. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the next one is, as you probably are well aware, if you watched TV and you watched the radio, listened to the radio and you see the newspapers, marijuana is a subject of great controversy. And how do you enforce it? How do CDL drivers pass it or not pass it? How does the federal law and the state law agree or disagree? So PERMA, our workers' comp company, has set up a conference strictly on this for two days up in Turning Stone. So since we need both the town board approval on some of this stuff and Highway Superintendent, because he's got to be administering, he's right there with the guys, I have a motion here to approve their support going up there. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves Highway Superintendent Martin and Councilman Witten attend PERMA Conference on Marijuana Laws at the Turning Stone on October twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, 2021, at a cost not to exceed a thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next one is, we got a letter from the Historical Society asking for our support. Their letter is basically to allow them to get a grant to have somebody do architectural measurements of their building, the Creek Meeting House, so that they can get future grants and improvements on it. So all it is, is a letter on our behalf. There's no money from the town specifically required. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approve a letter of support to the Historical Society for their plan to submit an application to the Preservation League of New York State to produce measured drawings and photographs of their building, which is the Creek Meeting House, be part of an eventual historic structure report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. The other one is, and this just came this morning, so I mean, some of this stuff's pretty, this, the other one just came this morning or the other day. This is for support, let's see here, yeah. Today I received a request to support a letter from the town of East Fishkill requesting Governor Huckle to appoint Kirk Imparati as Dutchess County Sheriff. Kirk has been in the Dutchess County Sheriff's Organization and most of the time was under Sheriff, the former Sheriff Butch Anderson, handling the operational details for the sheriff. He is well qualified and supported by all members of the sheriff's organizations. So, and, let's see, here we are. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board authorizes Supervisor Oberly to sign a letter of support from the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors to Governor Hokel requesting that she appoint Under Sheriff Kirk Imparati, the Dutchess County Sheriff filing the, filling the unexpired term of Sheriff Butch Anderson, who passed away recently. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Do we know how long that term is? Not that it matters.
It's the finish of the term.
Twenty twenty-three.
Two years.
Two years? Okay.
My, this is not a comment on, under Sheriff Imparati. I don't know the man and I'm sure he's qualified. The only time this town board is, that I know of, gets involved in this kind of thing is when we had to appoint to fill a vacancy to our own town justice or when we worked with Ryan Beck to fill a vacancy to the county legislature. We don't normally get involved with election politics like this, and I think it's a bad precedent. This is not our place, you know, this is the governor appoints here. So I just feel uncomfortable with the precedent that we'd be setting. I think we've done very well as a board of never bringing elective politics into our discussions. I mean, if you look at our past years' meetings, you'd never know that there's an election in three weeks. We never talk about it, and I think that's great. And so I'm just uncomfortable with us giving an opinion on an elected position that we don't have any role in appointing anyway. And when you look at the names of people that are being asked to sign this, we all know that half of them aren't going to sign it. So I, I just, I feel uncomfortable with it. So I'm not going to vote yes or no. I'm going to abstain, because I just don't think it's something we should be doing.
So let me just add a little on to what you're, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And, and I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying, but in, in most cases, when you have a deputy, like an undersheriff, is the deputy of, of the sheriff, that usually transpires that that person would naturally take the position.
Sort of like the vice president.
And in the case where we had, as a town, the two towns that it represented replaced who was our county legislator, we're now, and, and I, I just think it's unfair that the, the county sheriffs should be appointed by the governor. It should be the county's representatives, whether it be the county legislators make that decision, whether it be the towns make that. So.
If the law was that, I'd completely agree with you, when it isn't.
I know it's not. I know it's not. And, and, and as a, as a personal matter, just to add on to what Ray was saying, is Kirk has been the deputy sheriff for twenty-nine years, and he's been the undersheriff for fourteen years. There is no one more qualified to take over as the sheriff than Kirk Imparati. And, and for that reason, while it may not be precedent, and it may not, it may be the wrong precedent, I think he's the, the person.
The right person.
The right person.
And as I said, I wasn't making a judgment on that.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah. I think he's probably the right person, too. But I'm going to abstain, because I just don't think we should be taking this.
That's fine. Okay.
And I, I would support it for that reason as well. Plus, this was so abrupt. I mean, so there's, you need someone who can pick up and take over, not someone who's going to come in and have to learn from the ground up, even though they might be experienced. So for that reason, I would support this.
Let's see, where were we in discussion?
We had a second.
First and second, so now we could just vote.
It goes along. I forgot which section I was in. Okay, you ready to vote, then?
Yep.
Okay, I vote yes.
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 Abstain.
Okay, so it passes. Okay. Okay, the next one is one that's real fresh. It just, this afternoon, it's that fresh. Okay, what happened is we have a lot of trucks which are not able to be snowplows right now. They're in maintenance, waiting for parts or services or what. And we have no guarantee as to whether they'll be available within snowfly time. We're not the only place. The county's the same, the state's the same, other towns are the same. So Todd has taken his 2019 Ford F-350 dump truck and found a place to get a snowplow attached and a sander put in the bed, and it's a stainless steel sander. The money would come out of his funds, so we have the money there. And it's essentially an emergency purchase because otherwise we only have, like, two or three at most trucks that can snowpop, because the rest of them can't snowpop. So this would add another one, which hopefully helps us get through this crunch time. So I suggested we do it as an emergency purchase because we don't know what's going to happen. Some places have been waiting five, six months to get the vehicles out of the shop fixed. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves the emergency purchase of a snowplow and sander from Hudson River and Trailer to be installed on the 2019 Ford F-350 dump truck at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred, with the installation complete within thirty days. The snowplow is for seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. It's got an inverted V on it, so that's a two ninety-five addition. The sander's in stock. It's a two-yard stainless for five thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, one other item that was, that came in after, yeah, this thing. So it's not shown on our normal schedule. We had a petition come in from the story hour people, from the library that is a story hour. It's for the younger kids, kindergarten and less. And so we received a petition from the library story hour to provide a STEM playground near the library to allow the young children play and learn facilities. It was referred to, I'm going to refer it to the Recreation Director, Dan Harkenreiter, and Councilwoman Nancy Cunningham, to propose action on how to handle this request. I don't, I don't think it's an urgency thing because it'll soon be in, can't construct because the ground's frozen. But just to get it going and see what we can do, whether you use ARPA funds, whether we use some other mechani-, I don't know. I'm just offering suggestions here. So I just wanted to get that out onto the road here.
Can we clarify that it was a petition from parents? It wasn't from the library?
Oh, parents?
Yeah, it's parents who bring their kids to story hour.
Okay, because the, the thing had.
Yeah, I know, I know.
The cover letter was the library.
I misunderstood it, too.
Yeah.
What did, what did, I mean, I seen something come through. What are they trying to just make?
They, they go to story hour every week, and they thought it would be great if after story hour, there was a playground on the campus that they could take their kids to. That's essentially what it is.
That's near the library. They want to be able to sort of come out and then immerse their children.
Just like when, when you're in grade school, you know, at recess, you run right out and you come right back.
We got anything, like having some voices on the property or?
Yeah.
So there's some information.
I'd be, I'd be, if they want to come and talk to me, I would be happy to talk to them. I think we need to have more integration between the library and the, and the rec department.
Well, we just got it.
Certainly, that's going to happen in twenty-two, even though I won't get to see it. But, and so I think if they want to tell this person or persons to talk, come and talk to us, we can probably figure something out.
Yeah, we, we just got it like two o'clock or something. I mean, this is really, really late. But I didn't want it to delay, get it out there. Okay, so that's all the stuff I have there.
Can I just give a, I don't know where I can give, just an update with the heaters for the garage there? Just the, I spoke to Peter Sotero about the heaters, and the, he's going to try, he's trying to set up the time where I can meet with the engineer to come out and go over the details so we can start going forward with the, the bid on that. I didn't get it into the agenda. I just wanted to know that it is being worked on as, as we speak.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going into resignations and appointments. At this time, I appoint Catherine Gallagher as the supervisor secretary. And I follow that with the motion to officially figure out how she's going to get paid. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board set the rate of pay for the full-time supervisor secretary Kathy Gallagher at twenty-three dollars an hour for forty hours per week with full medical, dental, and eye benefits, with a fifteen percent employee contribution effective October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I make, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I just want to make a comment here. Catherine will be coming in for a few weekends to work with Carol Mackin to get on board with some of the administrative duties and training before actually working full weeks. Many thanks are given to Carol and her willingness to provide this early training to help Catherine adjust quickly to this complicated new position for her. So we thank Carol for helping break her in on some of the stuff that Carol knows about. Obviously, there's stuff I got to bring forth. I make a motion to approve Brandon Campbell as clerk in the video upstairs at thirteen dollars an hour for two hours per week effective October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Wyatt Kelly as full-time laborer, Highway Department, effective October sixth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to rescind the appointment of Ryan Mackin as summer grounds keeper effective October seventh, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one gets a little more complicated. I make a motion that the town board appoints Ryan Mackin as full-time highway laborer at a rate of pay as per the CSE contract for a dollar less than the starting contract rate of twenty twenty-one of seventeen dollars and sixty cents per hour, and a dollar less than the starting contact rate for twenty twenty-two of eighteen dollars and ten cents per hour for a period of six months or one thousand hours, starting October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Full medical, eye, and dental coverage with an employee contribution of fifteen percent, and paid leave benefits per the CSCE contract from D five one one zero point one one zero. That's the accounting code. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the warrants.
I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves October twelfth, twenty twenty-one general fund warrant, vouchers number four thirty-three through four seventy-two totaling thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one highway fund warrant, vouchers number two oh five through two twenty-eight totaling forty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, next one is motion to move funds. I make the motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approves Resolution Number of 2021, a resolution to move funds at the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Supervisors report, I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the final supervisors' report for September twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is anybody gonna want any public discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll open it up, I just wanna note, sometimes people don't wanna talk. Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting to public discussion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion carried. Okay, same rules as before, step up to the microphone, talk for three minutes or less, and, uh, name and anything, not necessarily an agenda, but town-related.
Uh, my name is Catherine Mustolo and I live on six thirty-one Pumpkin Lane. I just have a couple of quick things. One, I think, uh, play equipment here at the town hall campus is a brilliant idea. I agree with the Story Hour moms as they passed youth director at the library. The other thought I had, and I don't know if it fits, forgive me, under the rules of spending it, but these ARPA funds you've been discussing, I think it'd be really nice, um, to get a sidewalk, at the very least, from Friends to Stewart's. I'd love to see it go all the way through the hamlet because of what happened to that child, but I think that's probably unrealistic, but from Friends to Stewart's seems like, maybe a little more realistic and especially if you're upgrading the park.
Sure.
Those kids that go back and forth on their bikes would be a heck of a lot safer.
Have they tried to do that forever, right?
I've, I've tried four times already, and never got the right grant, but it would do it.
Will this one do it?
Huh?
Will, will it fit under the guidelines of this grant?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so, too. Yeah, I mean, what, what, wasn't there, and, and forgive me, because when that was done years ago, wasn't that supposed to be part of their deal, was there, they're supposed to put a sidewalk in, or was?
No, he allotted the land for it, but he didn't.
Oh, he allotted the land, so there's what, an easement for it, or is that?
No, we own the land.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we own la- a strip of land.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, you know, something, I think that's been talked about.
We only own it to the park, and to go beyond the park, which would be a great idea, it would entitle having to go and, and
Well.
Purchase land from
Right.
Those homes that are right on the road, which
Yeah, we tried that.
Give them even less.
And there was a big rebellion because all the trees get cut down, the driveways get shortened up, the... It, it's a catastrophe, but going up to Park View, down to other, is generally acceptable.
The only other thing I want to mention is there's a community event on October seventeenth at Fran Mark Park, it's a trunk-or-treat, everyone is welcome, from three to five P M. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, good, Russ.
You said three to five P M?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sunday, three to five.
Yeah, Russ Tompkins again, uh, first, I wanna say that I, I agree with a letter of support to support the under sheriff. This is Dutchess County and he's our sheriff. The guy's been there for years, and as they tell people, it shouldn't be politics, it should be people, and that person is the most qualified, and we definitely should support a letter to the governor so she doesn't put some political appointee in that really has nothing to do with, you know, the history of the department. And this is probably something I shouldn't say, but as to the library and the hundred and fifty dollars a month, I don't know how it worked, I remember when they passed that thing where they could actually, I would say, tax us for money to go to the library and increase their income, I guess you said double-fold, and I guess it's gone up since then.
No, no.
It hasn't gone up since?
No, the one fifteen has stayed the same, it's just that their budget has increased through, through fundraising and grants and.
Okay, well, what are they allowed, a certain percentage?
No.
Per year?
No, they get a flat five fif- one fifteen.
One fifteen.
Per year?
Per year, and that's it.
Okay. Well, and, and as I said, I, I was so in the dark that I thought a lot of the people that worked there were volunteers and I didn't realize they were all getting salaries.
It's a mixed bag.
I don't think that, uh, asking a hundred and fifty dollars a month, when you're, especially when you're locking in for twenty years, is out of the, out of the way. I mean, it's like, who, who, like you say, who, if you can lock my taxes for the next twenty years, I'll be happy. I don't think anybody's gonna do it, so. But the most important thing was, I, I agree wholeheartedly, would send in a letter to the, support Imparati. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I make a motion to close the public comment, return to the regular order of business, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last call. I make a motion that the town board adjurs the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. See you all, uh, next month.